I'm trying to wait for you, but I'm eating dinner now.
Yeah.
But I brought dairy, will you?
We'll call the county council back in order. Next, our salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read bill number 12-25?
An ordinance amending ordinance 76-24, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2025. Petitioner, clerk.
Mr. Tanner, committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Bill number 12-25 was moved forward with a favorable recommendation.
Petitioner?
And I was gonna, I was gonna present for the clerk.
All right, please.
We discussed this in committee. It's a small item. The salary for the clerk was supposed to increase by 4%. It's $144 change. And then the stipend that was to be paid last year was not paid, so we owe her that stipend for the election board. So this will clean up that, those errors. So I ask for your support.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll open the public, open the floor for the public hearing on bill number 12-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak against this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition of this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on bill number 12-25. Any further comments by any other council members? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion for passage by Mr. Katanzarite, seconded by Mr. Tanner. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Chetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 12-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next is public hearing, public comments on fiscal matters. Clerk, will you please read bill number 11-25?
An ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purposes herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of the St. Joseph County government.
Because all fiscal matters were heard and discussed by the council at its February 2024 committee meeting, we will, we will move directly to public comment on bill number 11-25, parts A through G. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition of this Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition of this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on bill number 11-25. Any further comments by any council members? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Figgs, seconded by Councilwoman Chabaz. Is, Clerk, please take the roll.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Chetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 11-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, please read bill number 1-25.
Bill number 1-25, an ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council establishing rules and regulations for the operation of off-road vehicles in St. Joseph County, Indiana, and adding new chapter 75 to the St. Joseph County Code accordingly. Petitioner, Joe Thomas.
Councilwoman Chabaz, committee report, please.
Comes to the full council with a favorable, favorable report.
Thank you. Petitioner?
I would just like to say one thing. These nice gentlemen came to the council last fall, I believe, and they just came here after the meeting and, and a couple people lived here, and I might have been out there with Raphael or I can't remember, Marcus, and they, they were talking about this, and we all thought it was a good bill, and I don't even own an ATV, either side by side. I'm clueless of that stuff, but I think it's cool. So I think it would be a benefit to the county, but the reason I'm carrying it was I just kind of said, yeah, I'll take it. It wasn't like I had any axe to grind. I think Mark would have taken it, Diana would have taken it, didn't matter. So I just want to say that it wasn't, this wasn't a big thing for me. I just was sitting there with these guys, and they're real professional, they got a nice club, and I think it will help the county and will have some extra tax revenue coming in, and I think they're all law-abiding citizens, and I think they have a, I think they got really expensive vehicles, that's for sure. I've seen some of those, man. But I'm in favor of this, and it's, I think it's really good, and I think most of the counties in the state, except for maybe a couple, I don't know, Mr. Zales, did you research that? There's only a couple left that don't have a county ordinance with off-road vehicles?
Primarily us.
Is it just us? It'd be 90, 91 out of 90, the last one, huh? So anyway, I'm just really, really positive on this, so I appreciate your support.
All right. Any questions from the council for the petitioner?
Question, Mr. Zales. Do we need to amend the, you know, we were given the January 8th version, and it got amended significantly. Was the amended one that was advertised, the, the new one? Okay, so we don't need to amend it? No, I think you already amended it, didn't you? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas, are we gonna need follow-up on this in the future? Do we need one of us on the council to, to go on a, on an off-roading expedition, just to kind of monitor and evaluate how it's going?
All mine of us.
Second that, third that, and fourth that. Yeah.
On our own dime, right? We're not gonna charge the county.
We might have to take a separate vote on that, then. Okay.
Any other comments? All right. Hearing none, we will open the public hearing on bill number 1-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Please state your, or please sign in and state your name and address. For the record, you have three minutes.
Troy Marskey, 19621 Orchard Street. I am in support of this bill.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Kirk Vincent, 54557 Buckeye Road in Osceola. I vote to approve this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Menzen.
Hi, my name's Dustin Battles, 18225 Kern Road. I support this.
Thank you, Mr. Battles.
Hi, I'm Tanner Harmon. I live at 25704 Henning Road, South Bend, Indiana. I'm in favor of this bill. I've been trying to find a way to get it in front of the committee members for a while now, I think since I was a kid, and got told I wasn't allowed to ride. Anyway, regarding, you made mention that these vehicles are very expensive, and currently the only place to ride them is leave St. Joe County, which takes the business with it. So such as, my family and I like to go down to Marshall County, where it is legal, and, and Stark County, and we have friends down there, we get a group ride together, and we go take the kids down to Culver and go get ice cream and sit around the lake and on the beach and play with the kids, and then, you know, make an event out of it, make a day out of it. The unfortunate part is, that takes our business out of St. Joe County and gives it to other people, which we would love to do, such as small towns like Waukerden, North Liberty, and areas like that, where there are a little ice cream shop in town or something like that, where we could give our business to, and do a fun little activity on an afternoon. Just go down there, get ice cream with the kids, see everybody, say hi, and just be another reason to be more involved within the community. And so I just see this as a net positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
I'm Tom Fox, 12300 Osborne Road, Waukarusa, Indiana. I represent a member of the ATV club in St. Joseph County, and also am a past retired farmer from this county. I still own farm ground in this county, and now, since I'm retired, I moved two miles straight east into the Waukarusa area, so I'm in Elkhart County. A month ago, we had a meeting with the Elkhart County organization and got approval for the ATVs to be on the Elkhart County, County roads, and it went quite well. We do have the, the right to ride in Marshall County and Coscosco County, so by getting the right to ride in St. Joseph County, I'll become legal again. Because when I was a farmer, I was legal. The state police says I was allowed to drive my ATV from farm to farm, and, but once I became retired and moved into Elkhart County, now I'm really not legal to drive back to my farm property two miles west. So I think it would be just the ideal operation for us to make the rules similar to what we have in Elkhart and Marshall and Coscosco. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Officer Newman, we'll start with you.
I just wanted to say I'm in favor of this. I spoke with several members of the club, and I think it is a good ordinance, just not only what the farmer had said about being allowed to check their fields and everything, but I think these are invaluable vehicles, and I think every county around us, including the ones to the north of us in Michigan, allow that. And then in my conversations with them, they understood that, you know, they had to just cross state roads, they couldn't ride on state roads. So I think they're very well educated on the rules for it.
Thank you, Officer Newman. I see one other hand, but I cannot read the name.
I don't know.
No.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition of this bill? Ms. Minesburg.
Hi, thank you for continuing to hear this. I, you know, don't have a whole lot of money. I make about $100,000 a year, since it sounds like having a big budget is part of this discussion here. And I guess I'm also the only woman speaking, so not to speak on behalf of anyone, but I did ride ATV for a whole summer for a job out in Wyoming, and drove duly trucks in Montana for another summer. So, yeah, I've, I've got experience with these vehicles. I know folks on snowmobiles. I used to live in Wisconsin, where there were snowmobiles all over the place. In Montana, I had a neighbor with a snowmobile who worked on it day and night. I've also researched the laws around Yellowstone. I would like to point out that until, you know, the 2000s, there were no regulations on emissions for these, so they polluted. I think it was the equivalent, riding a snowmobile for one hour was the equivalent of driving 170 cars for an hour, or driving one car for 170 hours. So they weren't particularly efficient. That has gotten better, but Yellowstone National Park has agreed that 2015 and newer engines and models are better in terms of sound abatement and pollution. And that's not just carbon dioxide or carbon monoxide, it's also particulates that contribute to asthma. So it can substantially deteriorate basically air quality around the engines of these vehicles when they're being operated, especially by a whole bunch of people in a big, long line. So I oppose this bill without some modifications for the health of children in our community that already suffer when people choose to go ahead and burn their leaves anyway, for instance. It's nice that they want to spend money. You know, I like to ride my bike, and I like to spend money at the neighborhood ice cream shop, too. This council has had almost zero support for making it possible for folks to get around by bicycle, and in fact, when I spoke to some of the folks who petitioned for this bill online, they seemed to think it was incredibly dangerous for me to be on a bicycle with my family on county roads. I would like to clarify that my brother currently, well, not currently, but he was biking to IN Tech pretty regularly from near the Warren Township Fire Station, I think it's Warren Township, whatever the new one is, maybe that's Clay, but he's not able to do that now. So I'm pretty upset that this council was sitting here laughing about people with lots of money taking them on fun trips, when my family can't safely bicycle to schools, there are problems with transportation for our kids, and you're all gonna laugh and make it fun to support basically a lobbying group for expensive vehicles that pollute our airways. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Minesburg. Is there anyone else, else online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on bill number 1-25. Is there any further comment from council? I'm sorry. Mr. Thomas, would you like to rebut?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. May I have a motion on bill number 1-25?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion to pass by Councilwoman Drake, seconded by Councilman Thomas. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
President Chetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Let the record show that bill number 1-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, please read the next bill, bill number 122-24.
I don't have, I don't have that in my packet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I did not subtract that from my notes from the last meeting. So there is, there are no more bills.
That's okay.
I apologize. Now, we now move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Seeing none, we move on to new business. Is there any new business? Seeing none, we move on to old business. Is there any old business? Seeing none, we move on to privilege of the floor. Please listen carefully to the following announcement. The public is invited to address the council on any item that was not on tonight's agenda. A time limit of three minutes shall be enforced for those wishing to speak during privilege of the floor. Before you speak, please sign in and then give your name and address for the record. Individuals may speak only once during this section of the agenda. The council attorney will keep time and will let you know as your time is expiring. Please use appropriate language and volume when addressing the council. Also, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council. Please refrain from directing your remarks to other members of the public who are in attendance tonight. Violations of these instructions could result in the forfeiture of your remaining time. Finally, the council does not normally respond to questions or comments posed during privilege of the floor, and with that, we would like to hear from our first guest.
My name is Tom Rowe, 26160 Lake Lane. I'm a little confused as to privileges of the floor as far as new business or old business, but, so I will just make these comments. If I'm inappropriate, let me know, okay? Number one, my concern, reading in the paper, just keeping informed, is about the Amazon data center, okay? And that just brought to my attention recently. It appears once again, the cart is before the horse, okay? Amazon is requesting like eight, roughly acres, okay, to be filled in, and that was not ever initially a part of any agreement. It came now, okay, the request. I don't think that they were competent, okay, or they didn't fully inform the council is what could occur, because now they're filling inland just to the south of Benedicks Woods Park, okay? That's one concern I have. Following with Amazon again, I'm looking at what was published by Jeff Ray in the newspaper, and it was published on Sunday, and I quote that he's looking at these projects as far as the diamond drives and what all out there, that they will start within the next year, even though all the infrastructure's up, okay? And that it will not be completed until 2027, all that out there. In the interim, I speak to the council again about, nothing has been formalized in regard to between Laramore and Quince Road. Once again, the cart before the horse, and I know I'm speaking truth when I see these facts, okay, that are being presented by Mr. Ray. In some ways, he's asking to be patient during all these times. I asked Mr. Ray, do you live out there? Do you see the traffic flow daily? So I just addressed the council on this out of my concern as to, is there any real action taking place? Or is this, this, this eight, 7.8 acres, is this just gonna be steamrolled through because Amazon's, is such a big player? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Deborah Doral, German Township. Thank you for hearing me tonight on top of everything else that you've heard and talked about. I'm very impressed that we have so many smart people in one room. I would like to direct your attention to a packet that I prepared, and Jen, Jennifer passed it out to all of you. The first page is the orangutan trying to fight the bulldozer, and I realize this is dramatic, and that is my purpose. I'm trying to call your attention to something that is going on here, but not with great apes and not with rainforests. The orangutan is an indicator and a keystone species, and to describe to you what that means, a keystone species is a species that the environment that it lives in does not do as well without that species. And 80%, as you can see, I gave you three pages on this, 80% of their habitat has been destroyed in the interest of palm oil plantations, and that has also destroyed 40% of the rainforest in that region. I want to then connect that to the next two newspaper articles that I've included. One, just recently doing a study on amphibians at Lydic Bog, and this, of course, relates to the wetlands, because amphibians and frogs are a sentinel species, and I've highlighted those portions of the article for you. And so a sentinel species is, as you probably all know, a species that depending on how well they are doing, it can predict how well we will be doing. And as the research shows, the amphibians are, 40% of them are in decline or extinct. And then, secondly, the "In Defense of Wetlands" was an article, again, written by scholarly scientists a couple years ago, and it talks about wetlands and how important they are. And it also, I want to call to your attention, that laid, in the middle of that article, it talks about the migratory birds and the wetlands, how they interact. My reason for bringing this to you is the Amazon permits that are now in the public comment period of item and Army Corps. And I have also included to, another document that is how we can have both, development and a healthy environment, which I think we are running up to a limit on that. So I ask you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Good evening, Brian Will, 52484 Hickory Road in Clay Township. I'm also speaking on behalf of the wetlands and Amazon's plan to fill them as part of their mega data center plans out in the New Carlisle area. Council members may have recently seen on the news the beautiful story of two eagles in California named Shadow and Jackie, who this week hatched three eaglets. Eagles, a symbol of American freedom, watch over and protect their young, nurturing them, feeding them, caring for them, just as humans do. Now, think of, not, don't think of California eagles, but think of Indiana birds, amphibians, ducks, turtles, and other creatures who call the wetlands near the mega data center owned by Amazon home. These creatures similarly care for and protect their young, as do eagles and as do humans. To our knowledge, Earth is the only place in the universe where life exists, and therefore shouldn't we as residents and you as council members do all you can to protect life, including those creatures and plants that rely on the wetlands and streams near the AWS facility? In the last few years, politicians in the State House here have passed legislation to reduce or eliminate protections for wetlands in favor of wealthy developers, builders, and corporations. Wetlands help filter our water, mitigate floods, and are home to wildlife. They serve, serve as a carbon sink in our place of quiet beauty. Let's not give up our wetlands to Amazon. We have already given Amazon so much, our electricity, our water, financial incentives, and even have jeopardized the rural character of western St. Joseph County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Jones. I've recorded my address in the log. I'm just here tonight, I'll start off by saying I don't envy anybody that's sitting in front of me right now. I think most people in the public probably wouldn't want to fill the roles that you guys fill, and that's regardless of whether I agree with any of you individually on an issue or not, or, or the overarching picture of what we're doing in this county. I do want to thank those who have found ways to work together. I'm just old enough to remember Clinton and Newt Gingrich doing a balanced budget together. That was bipartisan, so I like to see that. And again, even to the people here who I, I do not agree with, you guys are still, again, doing something that most people in the public wouldn't do if they were given that opportunity on a silver platter, because there are stresses that come with that. Having said that, I've been a student of politics and government since I was in elementary school, and you have to, you have to recognize when you're outflanked, whether that's politically, militarily. If you're outflanked and you don't recognize it, it's gonna get worse before it's gonna get better. I'll also say this meeting was a breath of fresh air compared to the city council meeting that I went to last night, where there was almost nobody present, and nobody making any kind of impassioned speeches about anything, to be honest. So with that, I will close and wish you guys a good night and rest of the week, as I did with the city council last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, council. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. What he said, you, you guys were amazing tonight. It, it was something to watch, I'll tell you. I'm glad I was here. I, too, want to talk on the wetlands. Article by Joe Ditzy, who was here earlier, I'm sorry, he's not here now, on the, from the online Tribune on the 11th, talks about the wetlands and what went into, whether they're going to destroy these wetlands, whether they're going to use an alternative site, but the final part of that article says, "Did Amazon look at alternatives?" Yes. The company states in its permit application that it looked at building the data center outside of the land Amazon has within the Indiana Enterprise Center, where it wouldn't affect wetlands, but because that would separate data centers geographically from each other, Amazon said the logistics that, that they just didn't prove feasible. They applied for a minor source air pollution permit with item for their 235 emergency generators, insisting that their north site, which is up by Edison Road, and their south site, which is south of Edison Road, were separate sites, so they could qualify for that minor source permit. I'm not sure what, if there's additional cost, additional reporting or whatever, but item agreed. Yeah, these two sites are separate, we get it, yeah, they're a mile apart, but you're doing the same thing, and if, if Dan calls in sick today... And if Dan calls in sick today at the north site, somebody from the south site's going to come in and replace him. Don't tell me these two sites aren't related. They're saying now that they are geographically separated by, from their alternative site. I'm going to tell you, there, it's not a geographical separation, it's an infrastructure separation. It's Larison Boulevard because the north site is on the west side of Larison Boulevard, and the alternative site is on the east side of Larison Boulevard. There would be no hardship in hooking these two sites up and not destroying that wetlands. And I'm told, I was told today, well, they're going to get mitigation in another, in the other parts of the Cankey Basin, which runs over up to Lake Michigan, which runs over to Valparaiso. So what good's that going to do us? Or the animals and species and other types of things that it kills when they fill that hole in? When three different farmers, generational farmers, Bob Humberger, Randy Mathis, and Brian Bailey, told them, you're not going to be able to put anything solid on that ground? We can't, this is, these are six and seven generational farmers who said you can't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caruso.
It's like being at the Academy Awards if you talk too long, isn't it? Cheryl Nix, Clay Township. I want you to picture a football field. Now picture one next to it, then add another one, then another one, and another one, another one, and one more. Seven football fields. That is a really enormous area. And if you add a third of one more, you have nine point seven acres, or 422,532 square feet. That is the size of the wetlands that Amazon is asking to destroy in St. Joseph County. The answer must be a resounding no. And I'm asking all nine of you to help push back and stop this devastation. Sadly, the state of Indiana removed protections for these wetlands. Developers can simply claim they will mitigate the damage they do. The problem with that is that they don't have to mitigate the damage in this county. We lose a major natural resource, and who knows where this supposed mitigation will occur? Given the massive layoffs of federal workers by this Trump administration, who is going to provide the necessary oversight to verify that Amazon has done anything at all? Indiana has lost eighty-five percent of its wetlands to development. Wetlands absorb CO2, as a previous speaker said, they control flooding, clean and filter water, and they provide habitat for flora and fauna that are necessary to provide biodiversity in our environment. Destroying these wetlands is not progress. I encourage everyone listening, go to the Hoosier Environmental Council website. They can direct you to the Army Corps of Engineers so that you can make public comment and tell them that you don't want this to happen, and also that you can comment with IDM. Please, let's save our wetlands in St. Joseph County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nix.
Good evening, for the third and final time. Mike McManus. I'd like to give some historical perspective to my comments. Scott Colfax is a name that probably some of you have heard of. He was the member of the United States Congress representing this district from 1855 to 1869. And in 1870, he became Vice President of the United States. He was the Speaker of the House in 1865, when the Thirteenth Amendment abolishing slavery was passed. He was the Vice President when the Fifteenth Amendment passed, which gave equality by race to vote. That equality to vote was eroded over the next several years during Reconstruction or following Reconstruction. In 1877, Reconstruction ended, and federal enforcement of voting rights, job entitlements, and things like that ended in the South. From 1870 to 1960, our country was subject, and when I say our country, it really fell on the backs of our black citizens, subjected to the Jim Crow laws that were not finally eradicated until the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Voting Rights Act of 1965 were passed. Last month, a member of the council made a comment about DEI, and made that comment as if DEI is some sort of concrete thing, and that if we saw it in our county, we should report it to you. Sounded a little bit to me like, show me your papers. So my comment is this, in response to those comments. My mother and father are buried in Arlington National Cemetery, my father in his dress blues, the same color of blues, the 25,000 Hoosiers who fought to abolish slavery and preserve the Union. I'm not going to allow my father's sacrifices and my mother's sacrifices to go to waste. You may think DEI is something concrete, like a box of chocolates, but it isn't. It's a simple concept of equality and humanity. And we're not going back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McManus.
John Hamilton, 913 West Colfax, South Bend. Well, we did not choreograph this, but I'm following Mr. McManus in his terms. I, too, am speaking about the DEI talk last time. Before I go into it, I want to say this. This has been one of the finest demonstrations of democracy in action that I personally have experienced in something like fifty or sixty years. This is democracy. This is what we want to preserve. This is what we want to enhance. And DEI is nothing more than a shibboleth. It's a couple of initials that have been made into the N-word. What you have to do is look at D, you have to look at E, and you have to look at I, and see what those words mean. Efforts to achieve actual diversity, equity, and inclusion seek to even a playing field that throughout the nation's history has been skewed in favor of what had been the dominant group. The attack on DEI, in fact, is an effort to return to some phantasm of fictional past. The attack on DEI is a reflection of both blatant racism and economic insecurity, as some of us face heretofore others who may be more competent, smarter, or harder working than we white males. Far more important, and this is crucial, it is an attack on our democracy. The Declaration of Independence, 1776, leads with, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights." Equality, equity, is the essence of our democracy. The attack on DEI seeks to divide us, to treat some of us as naturally inferior or threatening. The oligarchs, Musk, Bezos, and the other billionaires, love having us fight each other. They are the beneficiaries of our slide toward fascism. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for your service. This has been quite an experience. And I have a couple of messages for you to take a look at afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Anyone else in the room wish to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Is there anyone online who would like to speak during privilege of the floor? Charlotte, I believe you had your hand up first.
Hi. Charlotte Wolf, 21439 Osborne Road, Lakeville. And I, too, want to comment about the wetlands on the west side and everywhere in our county. I heard the spring peepers calling in the wetlands on our farm this evening, and it was a wonderful sound. I was a wetland scientist in my former life, before I began teaching at my learning farm in Lakeville in 1996. And you've heard me advocate for the many values of wetlands, and people here have spoken about that. The consequences of building in high-water table areas are extremely negative, and we have that going on on our county's west side. Please do all you can to prevent more destruction of our valuable natural resources, especially wetlands in the whole county, but especially out there where there's such a low, high-water table, and wetlands are critical in protecting our water quality and quantity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Mary?
Mary Countryman, 52959 Timothy Road, New Carlisle. A March 10th, 2025 South Bend Tribune article mentions nine point seven acres fill-in wetland and fill-in 5,000 feet of streams near Bendix Woods. Amazon, they say that Amazon must mitigate the wetland and streams by restoring them elsewhere, elsewhere. This does nothing for us. This does nothing for all of the birds and wildlife in the area. I ask the council to stay ahead of the Amazon requests to destroy more of our community. Migrating birds are in the process of coming back, as of tonight, approximately 14,800 birds have crossed through Indiana already, and there's an estimated around 22 million to come. During migration, birds depend upon suitable habitat and to rest and refuel. Hundreds of acres of farm crops have already been destroyed as a food source for them. Please don't allow 5,000 feet of stream to be destroyed and filled in by Amazon nor the wetlands. Wildlife and birds depend on areas, the area's streams and wetlands for their survival. Amazon purchasing credits to do something else green in another area does nothing for the wildlife in our area. Our community has already been overrun by something we, who live here, didn't ask for. The wildlife didn't ask for it either, and especially so close to Bendix Woods. The Amazon Data Center is wrecking what supports birds and wildlife. Please support the wetlands and streams at a time when so many birds are dying from the avian flu. They don't need to be overcrowded fighting for water sources, resources. It's ironic that the actual Amazon rainforest lost almost five million acres in 2022. I'm beginning to think that Amazon Web Services is attempting to achieve what has happened to the Amazon rainforest. Like I said, there's almost 22 million birds alone, not to mention all the other wildlife, the peepers, the frogs, all the other animals that depend on the wildlife in that area. And things usually do not end well when you try to fill in a wetland somewhere. The water often goes somewhere else undesirable. Sometimes it doesn't come back. Either way, it's a loss for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Countryman. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak during privilege of the floor? Seeing none, I would like to note that our next regular meeting will be April the 8th at 6:00 PM. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? We are adjourned.